Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, February 18, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Alex Nagy. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 117. Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution 316 of 2018 entitled, "Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements for the Preliminary Design and Final Design Services During Construction and Miscellaneous Services for Traffic Signal Installation of the South Side Signals Project to Account For an Amendment to the Contract That Increased the Total Project Costs But Not to Exceed $536,000." Bill Number 118. Resolution Granting Unto Jeff Yates, Care of McKnight Riverwalk LP, Their Successors and Assines the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense A New Ten-Inch Concrete Sidewalk Along South Fourth Street, Five Existing Loading Docks, As Well As a New ADA Ramp At 317 East Carson Street in the Seventeenth Ward, Third Council District. Bill Number 119. Resolution Granting Unto PNC Bank, Squirrel Hill, Their Successors and Assines the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense An ADA Entrance Ramp at 5810 Forbes Avenue, Fourteenth Ward, Fifth Council District. Councilman Daniel Lavell presents Bill Number 120. Ordinance Amending to Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative, Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161 Contracts In Order to Clarify Definitions of Contract Types, Correct Conflicting Language Between Commodities and Professional Services, and Add Additional Categories for Request to Waive the Competitive Bidding Requirements to be in line with Current Practice and National Standards. Bill Number 121. Ordinance Amending to Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative, Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161.22 Debarment from Bidding on and Participating in City Contracts in Order to Change the Requirement of an Affidavit to be a Certification which will Simplify the Contracting Process and Reduce Costs to our Suppliers by No Longer Requiring the Document to be Notarized. Bill Number 122. Resolution Repealing Items in Resolutions Approved on Various Dates Which Authorize the Sell of Certain Property in Various Wards of the City Due to an Incompletion of Sale. Two Twenty Eight Kramer. Bill Number 123. Resolution Amending Resolution 748 of 2019 Entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute an Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City of Pittsburgh in Lou of Taking by Imminent Domain of 410 Matthews Avenue in the Thirtieth Ward and to Accept a Deed for the Property, Further Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for this Purchase, Closing, and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs, to Adjust the Code Account Information to the 2020 Year." Bill Number 124. Resolution Amending Resolution 629 of 2019 Entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Certain Property in the City of Pittsburgh in Lou of Imminent Domain in Order to Advance the City's Proposed Permanent Closure of the Timberland Bridge to Provide Specific Payee Information and Adjust the Code Account Information to the 2020 Year." Bill Number 125. Resolution Amending Resolution 702 of 2019 Entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Execute an Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City of Pittsburgh in Lou of Taking by Imminent Domain 35 and 33 Semisir Street in the Twenty Sixth Ward." Bill Number 126. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,013 in Favor of Duquesne Light Company, Attention Carol Single, for Damage to their Light Pole near 1205 Denniston Avenue from a City ES Recycling Vehicle Pulling it Down on April 30, 2019. Bill Number 127. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,300 in Favor of Dane Hager for Damage to his Vehicle from an Intersectional Accident with a Police-City Vehicle in an Emergency Response at the Intersection of Frankstown Avenue and Washington Boulevard on March 31, 2019. Bill Number 128. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Three Warrants for the Total Sum of $70,000 relating to the Settlement of a Lawsuit Filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 129. Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Crossing Guards Special Events Trust Fund for the Deposit of Monies from Crossing Guards Specials Events Cost Recovery and Authorizing the Use of Monies Deposited Therein by the Department of Public Safety to Cover Premium Pay Reimbursement for Crossing Guards Personnel and Administrative Costs related to the aforementioned activities. And Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 130. Resolution Amending Resolution 12 of 2019 Providing for an Agreement and Contract with Cascadia Partners to Assist the City in Developing Plans and Studies for the Development of a Data Manual for the Comprehensive Plan and Provide for the Payment not to Exceed $213,657. That concludes the reading of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, February 18, 2020. We ask the Clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Cal Smith.
Reverend Burgess, President Pro Tim.
Here.
Six Members Present.
Thank you very much. Our First Order of Business is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have pledges from the Westwood Elementary School in President Councilwoman Cal Smith's district. If you would stand and in the well and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have a moment of silence. You may be seated. And now we have a presentation from the students. This is African-American History Month and we have been celebrating, most of us have been celebrating African-American history all month long. I will say that February is not just, although we emphasize African-American history in February, it's something that should be celebrated, studied, and emphasized all year long. And so we ask that those, the presentation, those who are here would come forward and do your thing. Before you have them leave, if you would give them the mic so they can tell their names and, Stan, come on, come stand up. All right. Tell us who you are and your grade.
It's on.
Is it? There you go.
All right, thank you. We played our little blues rendition and we also played a fiddle tune for you and they're going to introduce their name. They're, introduce themselves to you with their name and their grade and how long they've been playing their instrument.
Hi, my name is Shyne Magar and I'm in fourth grade and I just started last year.
Hi, my name is Yusuf Jemai. I'm in fourth grade and I've been playing for two years now.
Hi, my name is Paola and I'm fourth grade. I have played for one year.
Hi, my name is Kelly Mochra. I've been playing since last year.
Hi, my name is Tanaya. I am in fifth grade and I just started playing.
Hi, my name is Kalia Bonner and I've been playing for three years now. I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Isabella. But I've been playing violin for one year.
My name's Noel and I've been playing for one year.
Hello, I'm David May and I am the Acting Principal of Westwood School and we're just very excited to be here for African-American History Month. As you can see, we have an excellent string ensemble and we serve a diverse group of students every day in our district. And I also want to thank Mr. Michael Nick, Mr. Mike Nichols for all of his work. He is instrumental in helping us with a guest reader program at our school. So, we're excited to be here and I know it's exciting for our children and especially Mrs. Pushyager who works very hard at six different schools. She is an instrumental specialist that has a schedule that rotates between six different Pittsburgh public schools.
Thank you so much for having us. We had a great time coming and we really, really appreciate it. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Put it right there. We'll ask you, we'd ask you to sort of move to the side and as we prepare for the next order of business, which is proclamations. You can have seat if you want. You can, you do not have to leave at the moment. Our first proclamation to be presented is a proclamation by Mr. Lavell.
Thank you, Mr. President.
If Ms. Manley would please come forward.
This is co-sponsored by President Teresa Cal Smith but unfortunately she's out sick today so she sends her blessings. She wished she could be here, but I will present on her behalf. Whereas Olafemi Manley presented the food staples of Africa on February 11th at the Thelma Levitt YMCA and is holding, and is holding her 18th Annual The Taste of Africa Dinner on Tuesday, February 18th in celebration of Black History Month. Whereas Olafemi began catering in 1988, working farmers markets, craft festivals, and trade shows, manufactured and distributed her own products, and in 2010 became the sole proprietor of Olaf Appetit Catering Company. Whereas the company's mission is to improve the planet through education, community engagement, economics, and charity with the goal of restoring mental and physical health by nourishing the body and satisfying the soul using organic indigenous food staples from Africa and the Americas. Whereas an avid storyteller, Olafemi enjoys sharing the history of her dishes such as fried cheese, which plays homage to the African legacy of raising goats and watermelon, a cultural staple. She believes it is important for people to know the origins of where foods come from, why they are part of their culture, and how culture influences market trends. Whereas Ms. Manley plans on launching Joseph's Table, a five to seven course dinner at her underground supper club, rum crafted cocktails, as well as hosting pop-ups throughout Pittsburgh's community and art festivals. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Olafemi Manley for celebrating and preserving the culture of Africa in honor of Black History Month. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare February 18, 2020 to be Taste of Africa Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion, a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, motion is taken.
Thank you everybody for coming out this morning and for all the work that you do in the community. It has been my pleasure to serve the Pittsburgh community for over 20 years with natural food products, but we're really happy to announce that we've gone all organic and a lot of our food staples were able to raise and grow ourselves and to source locally as well as globally. But we believe that food should be number one. Food should be shared. We believe the food should be eaten with grace and with gusto. So it is our pleasure to really, to present and to launch Joseph's Table, which people can come and discuss topics that how we can really shape and change our world by enjoying food and craft cocktails. So come on out. I'm sure you'll hear about it, you'll know about it. We're always happy to give our samples and always happy to talk about food and how food and social justice works hand in hand together. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We have one to be read into the record.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby celebrate the profound impact of Patricia Wild's career not only at the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater, but to the world for her magnificent contributions, the art of ballet. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, February 22, 2019, to be Patricia Wild Day in the City of Pittsburgh."
Need a motion, a second?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, it is approved. Seeing no proclamation, more proclamations. We do have a will of council. Mr. O'Connor has a will of council.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I turned it in to the clerk.
Do you want it read in its entirety?
Oh, just the last paragraph.
Rest paragraph, if you would please read the last paragraph.
Councilman O'Connor presents, "Be it further resolved that this council pledges on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh and its residents to remain steadfast in its commitment to the furthering of opportunity, independent living, economic self-sufficiency, and the full participation of individuals in the City of Pittsburgh who have disabilities."
Need a motion, a second?
Don't move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, it is approved. Next order of business is public comment. Many ones wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes. Please start off with your name and neighborhood. The green light indicates the start of three minutes. The yellow light means you have one minute to summarize. The red light means your time has expired. Please relinquish the podium. Like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted and of course, order will be maintained at all times. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? Will the first speaker please come to the podium?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Lawrenceville and West End, American Political Science Association, American Sociological Association, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President, 2020. The core GIS position is that regardless of party affiliation from the 21 primary disciplines, get the best information at the highest level of intelligence, II, to solve Pittsburgh US and world problems. Two of the concerns of Pittsburgh City Council are voting and sexism. The latter being bias for one sex over others, not just one. Three, February 2020, RLM. Eighteen, August 1920, Amendment 19. Women get the vote. Democratic Party, I claim. Sexist on this position of a woman mayor of Pittsburgh. A no from 1920 to 2020. Eleven, February 2020, the council had a proclamation for the League of Women Voters, affirmative. 436 Seventh Avenue, Pittsburgh, 15219. Something that the LWV didn't offer. RLM leads on this, that's a one. The council follows, which is a zero. The LWV information, I offered it, the LWV did not. It's a zero. RLM, the vote, voter receipt to secure the vote, that's a one. The LWV, silent on that, zero. RLM, public comment, central to local democracy. The LWV people were ready to leave. Yvonne Brown said, "Stay, listen." And they were on the edges of their seats and only stayed, in my view, because she turned to them and challenged them. Ms. Gross offered some comments on the LWV. Was this at a university doctoral level or pre-university middle school level? To whom much is attributed, we expect more. And we expect more of a counselor or counselors who are at that level. Her information, yay, LWV, I am 53, so what? Congratulations, you're 53. On the vote, voter receipt for voter security, nothing. Ms. Gross could have raised the intelligence of citizens by focusing on the woman, first woman candidate for president, Victoria Hull, but she did not. This is a form of civic barbarism and I offer civil binarism. Of course, you know what that is.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. I will apologize to you, Dr. Miller, for the unexpected and background noise during your public comment and I just apologize on behalf of the council. Public comment is important and we want to make sure every speaker gets their due respect and time. Any other speaker? If there, if there are no other speakers, we will go now to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. We have myself, this is Chair of Urban Recreation. We have Councilman Coghill on my behalf.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much. There's none, there's no new papers for me.
And there's no new papers?
No new papers, these are final.
Yeah, these are final.
There's no new papers for myself. The next is Councilman Coghill, which is the Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gross, the Chair.
Okay, excuse me.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, I'm good. Sorry. Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 117. Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 316 Providing for a Contract or Agreement Providing for the Preliminary Design and Final Design Services Due in Construction and Miscellaneous Services for Traffic Signal Installation of the South Side Signal Project to Account for an Amendment to the Contract that Increased the Total Project Costs But Not to Exceed $536,000. Bill Number 118. Resolution Granting Unto Jeff Yates, Their Successors and Assines the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense A New Ten-Inch Concrete Sidewalk Along South Fourth Street, Five Existing Loading Docks, As Well As a New ADA Ramp at 317 East Carson in the Seventeenth Ward, Third Council District. Bill Number 119. Resolution Granting Unto PNC Bank in Squirrel Hill, Their Successors and Assines the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense An ADA Entrance Ramp at 5810 Forbes Avenue in the Fourteenth Ward, Fifth Council District.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gross.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 8 on 117.
Second.
Second. There's a motion, move, waive Rule 8. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Inner Governmental Affairs.
No papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That takes us to former President, Councilman Kraus.
No new papers.
Chair of Human Resources, thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Lavell, Chair of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Councilman Lavell presents Bill Number 120, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title One, Administrative Article 7, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, in Order to Clarify Definitions of Contract Types, Correct Conflicting Language Between Commodities and Professional Services and Add Additional Categories for Requests to Waiver the Competitive Bidding Requirements to Be In Line with Current Practice and National Standards. Bill Number 121, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title One, Administrative Article Seven, Procedures, Chapter 161, 22, Debarment from Bidding on and Participating in City Contracts, in Order to Change the Requirement of an Affidavit to be a certification or certificate, certification, I'm sorry, which will simplify the contract and process and reduce costs to our suppliers by no longer requiring the document to be notarized. Bill Number 122, Resolution Repelling Items in Resolution Approved on Various Dates, which Authorize the Sale of Property in Various Wards of the City Due to an Incompletion of Sale, 228 Kramer. Bill Number 123, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 748, which Authorize the Mayor and Director of Finance to Execute an Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City in Lieu of Taken by Imminent Domain of 410 Matthews Avenue in the 30th Ward and to Accept a Deed for the Property, Further Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for the Purchase, Closing and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs to Adjust the Code Account Information to the 2020 Year. Bill Number 124, Resolution Amending Resolution 629, Authorizing the Purchase of Certain Property by the City in Lieu of Imminent Domain in Order to Advance City's Proposed Permanent Closure of the Timberland Bridge to Provide Specific Payee Information and Adjust the Code Account Information to the 2020 Year. Bill Number 125, Resolution Amending Resolution 702, which is a Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to Execute an Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City in Lieu of Taken by Imminent Domain of 35 and 33 Semisir Street, the 26th Ward and to Accept a Deed for the Properties, Further Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for the Purchase, Closing and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs by Adjusting the Code Account Information to the 2020 Year. Bill Number 126, Resolution Authorizing Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,013 in Favor of DuKane Light Company for Damage to Their Light Pole Near 1205 Denison Avenue for, from a City ES Recycling Vehicle Pulling It Down on April 30th, 2019. Bill Number 127, Resolution Authorizing Issuing of a Warrant in the Amount of $3,300 in Favor of Dan Hager for Damage to His Vehicle from an Intersectional Accident with a City Police Vehicle in Emergency Response at the Intersection of Franktown Avenue and Washington Boulevard on March 31st, 2019. Bill Number 128, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of Three Warrants for the Total Sum of $70,000 Relating to the Settlement of a Lawsuit Filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 129, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Crossing Guard Special Event Trust Fund for the Deposit of Monies from Crossing Guard Special Events Cost Recovery and Authorizing the Use of Monies Deposited therein by the Department of Public Safety to Cover Premium Pay Reimbursement for Crossing Guard Personnel and Administrative Costs Related to the Aforementioned Activities.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lavell, you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I would like to waive Rule 8 on Bills 123, 124 and 125.
Motion to waive Rule 8, need a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Bill, motion has passed, these will appear tomorrow on the Standing Committee's meeting. That takes us to Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Papers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Strasberger, Chair of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. We ask that Councilwoman Strasberger present on behalf of Councilman Wilson.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 130, Resolution Amending Resolution 12, 2019, Providing for an Agreement and Contracts with Cascadia Partners to Assist the City in Developing Plans and Studies for the Development of a Data Manual for the Comprehensive Plan and Provide for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $213,657.
Thank you very much. The Chair has no papers, we will move to unfinished business. Is there any further unfinished business for council? If not, we will move to the next order of business, which is report of committees for final actions. We'll start as always with Councilman R. Daniel Lavell, the Committee on Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavell presents Bill Number 114, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for February 12, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 67, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,814.40 for Professional Services in Connection with Billboard Litigation.
You've heard the reading title of the bill. Is there any discussion on this bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mr. Burgess, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you very much. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 115, Report of the Committee on Public Works for February 12, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 88, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816, Approving and Adopting the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 CDBG Program by Increasing the Federal Funding Allocation for Bike Infrastructure by $73,886.40. Bill Number 89, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 386, which Authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement between the City and Passcheck Plus MTR for South Side Park Phase One Design by Increasing the Total Allocation to $400,000.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading title of the bills. Is there any discussion on these bills? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Reverend Burgess, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you very much. The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is finally passed. Next, we have myself, who is the Chair of the Committee of Urban Recreation. We ask Mr. Coghill if he would please present the final papers for me.
There you go.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 116, Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for February 12, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 86, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Director of the Department of Public Safety and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement in Individual Amount of $10,000 or Less with Performers, Instructors, Artists, Referees and Persons with Specialized Skills in Connection with the Department's Recreational and Instructional Programs and Special Event Services. Bill Number 87, Resolution Providing for an Agreement for the Use of Certain Property for Senior Facilities for the Provision of Centers Services to Seniors in an Amount Not to Exceed $87,010 Chargeable to Impaleable from the Seniors Community Program Trust Fund in the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? The bill has seen none, the bill is ready now for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, President Pro Tem.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us through our final bills. Now that moves to motions and resolutions. Is there anything by members to come before council on this meeting? Seeing none, there are some announcements. This afternoon, council has a cable cast public hearing at 1:30 on Bill 35 as it relates to a liquor license transfer for a No 950 Penn LLC. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February 19th, council will hold two cable cast public hearings. The first is scheduled for 1:00 PM on Bills 2019, 2307, 2020, 0029, 30 and 31, as it relates to the historic designations of the Weiss Federal Courthouse, the Bradbury, the City County Building and the Pennsylvania National Bank. The second cable cast public hearing is scheduled for 2:30 on Bill 2019, 2031, as it relates to the zoning of UPMC South Side. And finally, council will hold an executive session on Thursday, February 20th at 2:00 PM. I wish everyone a happy Black History Month and although I normally don't say this, on Sunday at our own church, all of our members are going to come in African garb to celebrate African American history. And so, with that, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the amendments and adjourn the meeting.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.